We are live.
Great, thank you Nicole, appreciate it.
Hi everyone, welcome, glad to see such a great turnout tonight. Go ahead and call this meeting to order of the February 6, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission. Can I get a roll call please?
Yes ma'am, Chair Williams here.
Vice Chair.
President.
Commissioner Aragon.
Here.
Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioners Deppisner here. Commissioner Westmoreland. Commissioner Wood. Great, thanks, now we're all gonna stand up and say the pledge of allegiance, hopefully everyone remembers it.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One inch under God, in the temple, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so typically, this is when we would public comment, but I believe that we have an agenda change tonight in order to have the applicants make their presentation and have public comment come after that.
Yes.
Great. Alright, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, the minutes of the January 9th, 2024 Planning and zoning committee.
I'm with approval of the minutes of the January 9th meeting.
Well, second that, alright, then by Commissioner Berto, second by Commissioner Spis, Deppisner, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Alright, any conflict interest tonight?
I do not have a conflict of interest, however, I've known the principal architect in this firm for over the Planning Commission back in Breckenridge, when he designed and built his first office building, so.
Thanks.
It was a big building too.
Anyone else? Alright, great. With the agendas, so now we're gonna move on to the Western Slope Veterans Coalition information item. So Manager Centeno is gonna start off with a bit of an introduction, and then we're gonna move into the applicant presentation, and then kinda during that is when we as a, we will ask questions. And then after that, we'll go into the public comment.
Perfect, okay, great. Alrighty, I, I don't have a ton to say, I'm gonna let John kick it off here, but the proposal came in, in a land use application, and it was permitted at that time that there was a different course of action that needed to be taken within land use. And so since he was, since the whole project was already on the agenda tonight for a site plan review, which ended up not being what they need to do, they just go on ahead and keep on the agenda tonight so that they could do an information item and let the Planning and Zoning Commission and the public know what was being proposed. So that is why we're here tonight, there's no action being taken, just an information item. And I will stop my screen and let John go on ahead and share his.
That's disabled.
Right now. You were faster than I was. And I apologize that we're down to one screen, the other TV last night decided to go neon on us, so I definitely don't think you wanna look at that one.
Thank you Nicole, again like she mentioned, we, we really just wanted to give it to one of you guys, kind of as our new onset plan, give you some information, obviously let the neighborhood know what the project's about, and neighborhood, you guys of course, and, and so we can determine whether we wanna move forward with this progress of, you know, project, we spent a lot of time and, and money getting this to your final design, so this feedback's very important of course. So I'm gonna try not to talk too much, but we do have some gentlemen here that'd like to say a few things off the, obviously it's the Homeless Veterans Tiny Home Project, Western Slope Veterans Coalition. I've got a few people this year, Jeremy Oats is the president, John Pettit is the treasurer, Mark Hogan's the architect, and John Beckes obviously has a few things to say, and I think John would like to start with just.
So I would just, my name's John Pettit.
Sorry, I don't wanna interrupt you, but if you could talk as close into that mic as possible, that way anybody online can hear ya. Thank you.
My name's John Pettit, and I thank you all for allowing us to bring in our concept into the, you know, to the meeting, and hopefully, you know, we get positive feedback. Just through history, I'm a Vietnam Marine. Thank you for your service. I struggle with all that. Anyway. I was very successful in my previous life. Wheels came off. I moved to Colorado, and so here I am in Glenwood Springs, and I hadn't been involved in the military for over forty years. I had survivor guilt. Anyway, we had a couple suicides in our valley back in 2013, 14. It compelled me to get involved, and I started Western Slope Veterans Coalition. And fast forward, the county gave us some office space in Glenwood for a dollar a year, we remodeled the facility in 2019, and it had five thousand square feet. We've named it and dedicated it to the Jesse Beckus Casey One Veterans Community Resource Center. And so, as, as time went on, we, we got our 501(c)(3) back in 2016. We started the organization in 2015. I mean, I don't wanna ramble, but anyway, we were given a hundred thousand dollars from the VFW in Denver, two years ago, and we, presently, we give away about fifty thousand dollars a year to eighty veterans in the valley. And we raised that money from two funders, golf tournament and the beer garden sales at the Garfield County Fair. Didn't wanna just waste this hundred thousand, so we decided that we would start looking into a project of trying to sell, solve the homeless veterans' issues in our valley. And that brings to silt. And we, we founded a piece of ground with, with John's help and with Mark's help, we are now presenting this idea to, to you folks, so.
Thanks Jeremy.
Thank you.
Jeremy Oats, the Western Slope Veterans Coalition President, would like to say a few words also.
So Commissioners and community members, thank you for your time this evening. I'm a, a little bit younger than, than John Pettit, but I too am a, I was a career special forces soldier in the US Army for twenty-two years. I'm a native of the Roaring Fork Valley, so when tired, I moved back to the, to the Western Slope, and I you know, sort of drifted into some of these sort of veteran nonprofits. I was on the board for Huts for Vets, I've been involved with CAMO, I've been involved with the National Adaptive Sports Clinic. And eventually, that led me to Western Slope Veterans Coalition. And in the last three years, the, the present of that, so one of the things that we've really done well with is what John talked about, which is the, the immediate impact or, or short-term monetary logistical type support to put our, or reduce the amount of risk on our most at-risk veterans, those experiencing homelessness or at risk of being homeless. Includes in some cases, you know, families. Or, you know, we think about the War on Terror veterans, but you know, a lot of times it's a, it's a Vietnam-era veteran or a cult veteran that's, you know, experiencing not just homelessness, but also geriatric care requirements, that, that makes things extremely difficult to, to, to stay, in particular with the, the weather and just the environment here in the, in the sort of, in, in the Roaring Fork Valley and then the Colorado River drain, so next slide.
Well, we'll do this later.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, that's, that's why I'm, I'm involved, and that's why I appreciate everyone's time this evening.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, John Beckes would like to take a few moments.
My name is John Hughes, I'm the Vice President of the Western Slope Veterans Coalition. I'm also a Vietnam veteran, Navy. My son Jesse was a Marine, served two tours in Iraq, one tour in Afghanistan. He came back and took his own life five weeks after he came home. Twenty twenty-two, that we lose every day to suicide. And that's why saying this homeless thing under considerate or under, you know, these guys need a lot of help, and that's what we're trying to do. We have an emergency fund committee to the coalition, and we give out, like John, about fifty thousand dollars a year to help these individual veterans, and one of the biggest needs that we see is homelessness. And as you're aware, living where we are, winters can be a little brutal, especially nine to ten. So this is something I think that can really be helpful for the veterans in the area, and I think it would, you know, it would also help the city itself to give you a little bit of positive feel. So, thank you.
Thanks for your service, thank you.
Thanks John. So obviously the stakeholders in the project, you have the slides, we have the continuum of care for the homeless valley, it's twenty nonprofits supporting unhoused veterans in Pittkin, Garfield and Eagle Counties. To Mark is Mark Hogan, he's the property owner and the architect for the project. He is also local, lives in Peachtree, and then I'm acting as a developer, land use consultant for the project. So, as these guys touched on, old background, at any given time, there's eighteen to twenty homeless veterans living on the, in Garfield, Pittkin and Eagle Counties. Currently, there's no dedicated temporary home, or from that homeless housing in that geographic area or valleys. Highest concentration of these homeless veterans is between Goodwood Springs and Parachute, so we're right in the, the heart of it, right here in the valley. That, that's one of the reasons we like silt as a location, so. Got the VA Telehealth Clinic, Western Veterans Coalition, and Catholic Charities involved. Unhoused vet demographics, three-year census data, indicate fifty-one unhoused veterans, forty-six individuals, families. Many are housed with the HUD-BASH, or together with the VASH program, but as your housing is, is an issue in the valley, so even with the the HUD-BASH program, there's no place for them. We're actually thinking that may be part of the funding to help pay the, the cost for their rent on our project if successful. Eighteen plus or minus remain on by name list of chronically unhoused, with many of those being senior citizens. So again, these are just people who can't afford to live here, they have issues, so we're, we're trying to address that with the project. Currently, eight individuals, one family actively seeking housing, with nine veterans and families either declining service or being in an unknown status. A lot of these people are, are unknown or declining because they, they have no path forward, they don't, what's our options, where can we go? So our concept for the Western, Western Slope Veterans Coalition, the nonprofits, OSs developers and builders, state government, and we, we've spoke with obviously the county commissioners and some of our representatives, and everybody has been very supportive of our, our concept, so we're trying to take this to the, the next level, obviously making really good. So as we mentioned, silt is the ideal place. We think it's centrally located, a good portion of the veterans are, are living, you know, locally in our communities, so we, we really like this area. The parcel we're looking at developing is an undeveloped piece of property, as easy access, obviously the Brafta is two or three blocks away, we've got convenience stores, a lot of two-dollar stores, all walking distance. And a public library, pretty much everything they really need is at walking distance. So we're looking at fourteen independent living tiny homes. Would take every known unhoused veteran in the tri-county area who is seeking housing off the street, that's what the number may say. This tiny house community, you'll see later in the slides, that we have an onsite manager, accommodations for a small community center for group activities, and the concept is to bring in slurs for these people, so they don't have to go outside and try to find counselors or transportation, we'll bring the counselors to them. Our initial development cost, two point five million dollars, and obviously that's a moving target, that's our, our budget for now. We'll get more into detail in a minute, but kind of the concept of the fourteen units, you can see the, the manager and community center in the middle. Quick exterior elevations, unit size three hundred and eighty-four square feet, all VDA compliant, kitchenette, bedroom, full bathroom, and stackable laundry units. Our current onset is keep them all single occupancy, but we could modify for dual occupancy, obviously TV and internet included. We like this location, obviously infrastructure is pretty readily available in Ninth Street, what I'll have to do is bring down the alley, so water, everything is right there close, obviously we'd make the improvements, our only legal access is the alley right of way to this property, so we would improve that, obviously curb grider sidewalks. Again, the facility manager would be.
Thanks, I know what it's doing.
So the, the facility manager would be housed onsite, and we'll look at dual purpose, dual headed, be the tiny house, tiny house village mayor, so in charge of behavior, monitoring individuals, hopefully resolving any issues that come up, so there'd be full-time supervision. I know that'd be a concern of the neighbors, so we wanna make sure we address that, and then potentially be the social worker slash counselor for the residents. So real quick, just touch touching on a few issues, a budget of two and a half to two point six five million, we actually are working with the grant writer already, looking for some grant money. We've got several independent companies, agency, we've got government entities, everybody's interested in the project, we've got a lot of interest in people donating money, but we have a real project, we really can't go to them and say X number of dollars to build this, so that, that's why we're, the steps we're, we're taking now is we'll take your guys' input, your feedback, and if, if you guys are okay with this moving forward, we'll design, and then we can also simultaneously start chasing all this potential money that's out. But we're pretty confident we can get enough money to, to build this. We're also talking about, you know, HUD possibly allows us to build project based all fifteen units, do the VASH program again. We would, since these are all one ownership, Western Veterans Coalition would own all of these as one property, they would obviously take care of the, you know, triple net and the CAM, so we're taking care of all that exterior maintenance, trash, water, sewer, inclusive in the, in the rent that they pay, and they would pay rent, this is gonna be subsidized. One of the questions was, is there a timeline for veterans' stays, open-ended? We haven't decided that yet, it just depends on who we partner with, if it's a VA or HUD, if there's some, you know, recommendations or qualifications from them. The general idea is to keep them there two, three years, get them on their feet, and hopefully get them, you know, back into the community and be able to, to work full-time and afford rent somewhere. So a little timeline, obviously we're at the, the concept plan now. We'll go to the board of trustees next, get their feedback. Everything is, looks like it can move forward, we'll put the property under contract, and then we'll move forward with the severance and design, design work, so we'll come back to you guys with a, a formal, likely a PUD application for the project. In the meantime, do some community outreach, yeah, non-socialization, I know the neighbors are gonna have more questions, hopefully we can answer many of those tonight. That's why we kind of went ahead and went through with the public noticing, figured that's just as good a way as any to get everybody in the same, at the same time, they can see our project and we can answer the questions they have. And then once through final approval, we're looking at two to three years to go out the project. We, we'd like to do it quicker, but again, there's a lot of variables and we just can't foresee, so we wanna be cautious of, you know, two to three years at this time. And then I'll let Mark take them here.
Thanks John, and thank the Planning Commission for your time and your service, and also I wanna thank all the neighbors for coming. Neighborhood input is very important, and we I've been working on my listening skills with the help of my wife. Any comments from the neighbors, I'd really appreciate it. This is a vicinity map, showing that we have access off Ninth Street. And mentioned earlier, my wife and I live on Peach Valley. I'm a planner detective, and our farm is actually located in Silverthorne. It's BHH, Colorado, and we've been in business since nineteen, as Michael said, a long time, seventy-six. But this is the vicinity map, it's a secluded site. We can flip to the next slide and look at the site again. We have access from Ninth Street, as John mentioned. We've actually talked with the fire marshal, and we have preliminary approval based on their input to provide a fire department turnaround. So it would be a twenty-foot roadway that would come into the property. There's a code compliant, I think T we call it, so that the fire trucks can come in, and it also provides access for our dumpster. And then the fire marshal also requested that we extend the alley to the neighboring property to the east. So we have a ten-foot alley into that way. The site plan shows seven small duplexes, there are two units each, three hundred and eighty-four square feet, as John mentioned. There's also a storage space for each unit, that's four by eight, so you'd have a place to put your bicycle or suitcase or whatever it might be. The site plan, fifteen parking places. Five of those are tandem, we really don't, we need fifteen spaces, but we're providing one per unit. In the, the manager's unit has a garage, an oversized garage. So there's fourteen surface spaces and handicap space and a garage with a space in front of it for the manager. Manager's located in the central nation, and the community building is adjacent to that. There's a nice sunny deck faced south with a great view, and we have this sidewalk stair unit, and as John also mentioned, all of these units are accessible. So we have the ability to provide accessibility, to give us flexibility for a number of clients that might that we might want to do. So that's really the site plan, we have landscaping, we complete the setbacks, the fifteen-foot side, the twenty-foot front here, and then there's also a fifteen-foot side yard setback on the east side. There's a drainage that goes along the east side, and part of our civil engineering include piping that drainage so that we can landscape and clean it up. So that drainage is kind of a problem, we were looking at it with one of the neighbors, and it needs to be cleaned up. We'll have a detention pond, and again, landscaping, landscaping, the green, the areas around all of this. So that's really the site plan. One last thing on the site plan, the fence, we're proposing to provide a secure fence around the entire park. We worked with Dave Moore, who was one of the neighbors, to look at how we can construct that fence, but that fence would be maintained and constructed in this development. So security, counseling and management is very important. We'll flip to the next slide. This is an image, all of the buildings are one-story. There's a two-story element in the manager's unit, manager's unit is actually a three-bedroom unit. It could be bedroom unit plus an office, and we can show you the plan here in a minute. But the building on the right, as you look at the screen, is the manager's unit on the right, the community building in the center, and on the left is a typical duplex. We're up with a very creative color scheme. It's red, white and blue. So, next slide. Here's a typical duplex tiny home. It's got a, a front porch, the front porches are important because our clients will sit out and meet their friends and all that. The units are three hundred and eighty-four square feet again, there's a living room, a unit kitchen, a seating island, if you could watch TV from, there's a single bed, and then there's a screen you can pull across for privacy. The bathroom is in the rear and it's totally accessible to get all the storage. So these units are fourteen feet by twenty-six feet size, and there's a code compliant party wall between them. Sound and security and fire ratings. Simple roof forms, simple architecture. So next slide. Here's a plan of manager's unit on the right. And again, there's a party wall in the middle. In the, in the community space, we have a small meeting room for counseling, we have office for the manager. We have a billiard table, or actually table. And a big living room with a big TV game table in the kitchen. There's doors that open up to the deck. Part of the deck is covered so we can have a grill, and we're showing a, a fire table or a fire pit so people can hang out and look at the view and sit in the sun. So this is the upper level of the manager's unit, two bedrooms, with another dorm room. Alright, so that's, that's the architecture, and we'd be happy to listen to suggestions.
And now that you've seen all the fun stuff, we'll touch on some of the, the code compliance stuff, because I know it's we're gonna get to the next phase, so we just went through your comprehensive plan, and we can go through these real quick, and we just wanna show that, that our, our concept plan meets many aspects of the plans of the plan, and so growth from the core, promote infill development, redevelopment, to be first part of future growth, instead of continually expanding borders with annexations, obviously this is a project, it is a unique piece of property, but we think it is a good infill project and applicable for this, because it does give us some privacy for, for these veterans. Upgraded inclusive housing types allow individuals and families to remain in the area. Speaking of itself, it's pretty neat, the duplexes keeps the, the veterans here all good. And then enhance silt's image, promote pieces of integrated development patterns, establish close, establish close knit neighborhoods that foster community interaction while encouraging growth where infrastructure exists. So we need all of those, obviously, we touched on that, is, is readily available to the site. This will be a smaller community within the community, right, it's gonna have that nice close feel with the neighbors, the deck. Policy A1, promote compact development by encouraging infill and development, clearly we're, we're doing that. Use designation for R2, expect it to have high densities of five units to sixteen units per acre. This is about thirty-five thousand square feet. So we're, we're right there, just at sixteen, or just a little over sixteen units per acre on the formula, so we're, we're meeting the, the air density requirement for the R2. The duplexes meet the housing types for the neighborhood. You've got townhouses to the east, single family to the north and the west. The town is supportive of redevelopment, this is within this comprehensive plan, land use designation both on a small and large scale. Since this area is clearly within the town's core development, the town could well benefit from increases in density because of that, the infrastructure's in place, we touched on that. Economic development. The public private partnership, there's nothing better, right? We've got a, a good image on the silt, supporting a nonprofit, we're supporting veterans, I think it's a win-win for everybody. And encourage the private sector to participate in partnerships with nonprofits and agencies to provide community benefits and services. This is probably the ultimate project, and it's gonna combine both government agencies and private donations, obviously we've got lots of private donors already, you may have wanted to step up, and then we'll be looking for down the silt, obviously cooperation, the Garfield County Committees, the vice chief of the Garfield County Housing Authority, I think Cheryl may be here. The last you get the Garfield County Housing Authority, I think Cheryl may be here, she's right there in the corner. And is very supportive as well. Housing goal two, encourage high residential housing areas around neighborhood centers and within existing downtown core. Obviously, providing the downtown core with the high-density development. First development, redevelopment, infill within and close to existing downtown by promoting incentives like reinvestment in older neighborhoods. So this being infill in older neighborhood will essentially build this area and cleans it up. Obviously, access will, will help everybody. And then potential impact, this is right out of your land use code, ask, ask us to address these specifically. Traffic, we think there's going to be limited impacts for the traffic in the units. They're, they're one event. We believe most of the tenants won't even have vehicles. That's why we stack the parking spaces. They're homeless, so, so most of them don't have a vehicle anyways. If they do, they're not going to be driving much. And also getting your bicycles. Town services and limited impacts, especially for the, the units. They're small, generally going to be single occupancy. We've got plenty of sewer and water capacity available in Ninth Street that we can extend the utilities to the site. Signage, we're not looking to put a large sign, maybe just a small sign at the end to direct people back to the, to the community. Open space, you saw the site plan. Mark's got the entire project surrounded with open space and landscaping to both, you know, act as a buffer to the neighbors and also provide a nice open air for the tenants to sit on their deck and enjoy some, some peace and quiet. Schools, at this time, we're thinking we're going to have new families here. Obviously, in the future, it could potentially happen. But as you know, a good elementary school within walking distance, a few blocks away with, with all the buffing that tools through there. Emergency services, as Mark mentioned, we did talk to the fire marshal. It's the biggest concern. His biggest concern was having access for the fire truck and the turnaround, which we want to accommodate into the design. He also asked us to extend that access as far east as we can, more for ambulance serviceability backside of those units. So we wanted to cover the entire width of that lot. So we potentially address his concerns. She's very comfortable with the design and the site. Not heard back from the town as far as law enforcement. We don't see any issues there, especially with an onsite manager. Hopefully, we're going to mitigate any issues that do come up. Other utilities, electrical. We did actually talk to Excel Energy. Sam Wakefield did provide a will serve letter. She's, she said there's plenty of capacity and we can extend that also from the Ninth Street or the other side. These will likely just be all electric. Using probably a, a heating and cooling, a mini split, ductless mini split, not over the wall. So something like for heating and cooling, all electric. So pretty minimal, probably two transformers on the site. So summaries, one-of-a-kind project area that is desperately needed to assist our homeless military veterans that have selflessly served our country. This is our opportunity to return the favor for their service and we hope you have that same sentiment. Thanks, all for us.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions of that is right now?
I think the only question I'd have, John, is, is when you mentioned two and a half to three. Are you looking for groundbreaking to the completion of the final unit? And, and what, in that process, would you build all the infrastructure? And then get all your hardscape and then build the units separately or, or what's the time?
Yep, very good question. So we're thinking for final approval. And obviously, the, the, we need a little bit of time to raise money. So if we can work to the P U D, as, as we get approvals, we'll be working on grants. But we really don't have a project until we have our final plat on our P U D, right? So we're thinking that first year is raising enough money. As soon as we get paid for infrastructure, we'll do the infrastructure all in one shot. Right? It's a tight enough site. We've got it all done. And then if we can raise enough money quick enough, and we're giving ourselves a little time, the three years. So the first year is probably raising money, starting infrastructure. Second year completed. But when we start, we would like to build them all at one time.
Yeah, I understood that. I was just confused about it.
Probably two to start in that timeframe. And again, we're shooting a little bit in the hip there trying to forecast money raising grant. In, in the grant process, I know we're looking at some federal grants, you get to submit that application once a year. So if you miss it in the spring, and you have to wait till the next year, it'll automatically two years out. So that's going to be the, the key. But end of the day, we have to get those. So we would like to start, if we do get final plat approvals, we would like to start before that year expires. Get the project underway. And then obviously, once we start, we'd have the money to finish infrastructure. We may have to pause and wait for the rest of the money to the units. But our intent is to get enough money to build them all at one time.
And next question is, um, just looking at it, is, is the site lighting, what do you think as far as that? Is it going to be in the parking areas, is it round? It's going to be pretty bright in areas? It's going to be?
I can address that. Typically, we'll do site lighting. We'll light each of the units. And then we'll probably have some site lighting that'll be shielded and downcast. And generally, we'll keep that pretty low. We control that with a particularly a photo cell on and a time clock off. So we might lighten the site, say, us till ten o'clock or eleven o'clock at night, something like that. That detail we really worked out yet, but we'll, we like simple things.
Any more questions? I had a couple of questions. You had mentioned the idea that the space would be maybe more of an interim place for veterans to go, like stay there maybe two or three years before, hopefully, you know, being provided resources to get back on their own feet. Any thoughts as how that is going to work? Like how, like any policies that you have discussed or that you might have a place to kind of ensure that transition kind of happens?
John, you were Jeremy with it. You know, I think that's, right now, that decision hasn't finalized. We've talked to Cheryl Strauss and the Garfield County Commissioners. There are other options. I've got them written down. I don't have them off the top of my head. Maybe Cheryl can throw that out for me. But there are other options where it could be long-term. Depending on if we needed five or six of these to long-term, then we would have HUD rents, helping pay the rents and give us enough money to run the project annually, if you will, year-round. And, but that, that is not bad to them, to be, to be very frank. So.
Yeah, no, no, still very early in the process.
We would run that through Silt. I think you folks already have a senior housing project that, that runs very well. And we would try to maybe pattern ourselves to some degree after that. I'm not sure.
It's sold out all the time. It's all, yes. And there's a, there's a myriad of, of sources, best practices for, for both models. For the, for the, you know, sort of transient, you know, life skills building of methodology for, you know, permanent housing sort of in, in, you know, in perpetuity. And I think there are pros and cons. But like John said, you know, we, we really, we'll, we'll be dependent on who we partner with and, and what their strengths for their funding are. Particularly the VA and HUD Bash program, which is more on the side of permanent housing rather than the sort of life skill building block model.
Sure. I apologize if I seem a little jumpy. There is a fighter that is like trying to build its web right here and I don't want to kill it. But he killed it.
No, it's okay to kill it.
Keep their eye on him. He just keeps kind of eating around. Sorry about that. My next question, so if the project like comes to fruition, are you all planning on being like the administrators? Like the, you know, the entity that we, like the, the leaseholder? Like kind of getting into that game of, of like re-management almost?
Yes. So Western Soul Veterans Coalition?
We do have a lease. We have an operating plan. We've got an animal policy. We have a, what's last one? Arbitration, if you will, or complaints. And we patterned it after the year Silt Senior Center. So we're, and we have with us, you know, if that needs to be turned in, that's, and that should.
And then we would, would engage in, you know, building the connective tissue with the other stakeholders in, you know, the valley and, 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 you know, basic the front range to, to be able to bring those resources in. So essentially, you know, method of understanding with, with each one of our partners. So that we can, we can define who has responsibility for what on the campus here for, for, you know, the, the welfare of the veterans.
Sure. A question, then we can get to public comment. I'm curious if you all looked at land in Newcastle or in Rifle or approach either of those communities and, and what the feedback was?
So we would like to, we started in Glendale. And as you know, that's virtually impossible. We, we did work for a few months on a, a landowner on a potential. So we came down valley looking Newcastle, Silt, and Rifle. Newcastle was, was both the best to find any available land. It's just land law. So Rifle and Silt obviously were our two choices, I guess. And we spent quite a bit of time. We probably spent four to six months reviewing properties and potential sites and locations. This one seemed to be the bit. So this is the one we decided to pursue.
Thanks. And then Westmoreland has something to say as well. Okay, Commissioner Doby, I think, has a question as well, so.
My question was about landscaping and water usage. If you have a plan to zero scape or anything about the water outside of units?
Yes, our landscape plan will be designed with zero scapeing principles integrated in. So they, they materials that are drought resistant that don't use a lot of water.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I would like to make a comment and ask a couple of questions to you guys. First, talking for your service to the country. Number two, despite us going between there and he's not part of our commission, so I didn't want to card my hearing, so.
You can just smash it.
Does he have a vote? Does he have a vote?
Anyway, in reference to what you're doing, oftentimes veterinarian, that, excuse me, vets have PTSD issues that has to be addressed. Is any of the homeless vets that tend, which you think is a tragedy? Are any of them currently under any form of medical VA supervision, reference to issues? Emotion issues because of war or anything else that's been related to military service?
I can speak to it. I've got it. And I've managed to overcome my issues. And so this is, this is near and dear to my heart. We don't want any more suicides.
Right.
That's, that's the name of it. And if we can make sure that we don't have any more of these.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that being said, also add that we've talked about having a background check process, interview process. Obviously, we're going to try to minimize the, the risk to the community with the way, you know, sexual offenders or eventually violent offenders in there, of course. We're best to screen those. Now, obviously, many of them may have PTSD symptom issues, but that's why we're trying to have an onsite manager slash keeper. So hopefully, they can, can work with those people. And if it's persistent, obviously, we'd have N O leases to move them out of there. But yeah, that's going to be the challenge, of course, probably.
Maybe. I, I misunderstood, but to your point, we would vet the individuals. We would work with the VA as far as what their radiation is, as far as W N A or the Garfield County Housing Authority, they would direct us to who would be a quality you know, candidate, if you will, if that makes sense.
Can I just throw a comment in as well? One of the big things that veterans need, they need to be able to talk to other veterans. People have been through the experiences that they've been through. That was one of the issues we had with Jesse when he came back. There was nobody for him to talk to at the time. And because of that, he took his own life. But by having other veterans at same community that they can sit on their porch and talk to is going to make a big difference.
And most of the vets, does this include male military as well as male veterans in this? In this town or little facility you want to put together here?
We are exploring all options.
Okay. In reference to the community, does this meet with our comprehensive plan?
I do not have enough information on a full submittal yet to determine. So as soon as there's the full submittal for the P U D, then we'll relate into everything that it needs to meet. So I have not double staff report on this yet. This is, this is just a very preliminary overview. That's the information only.
Okay, good. Well, I want to thank you again for your service. I mean, a lot of questions, maybe as we're going down the pipe. In reference to this, my main concern as long as the comprehensive plan qualifications, which is basically what we do are the things, but that's most important. There is a need in this valley, up valley, down valley for a facility like this. I did not know the magnitude of the homeless population with the vets, veterans. So I think I will finish with what I have to ask. Thank you.
So I guess I'll say a couple of things about veterans. My grandfather was in the Spanish-American War. I'm not sure the years, but pretty late nineteenth, early twentieth century. And my mother and I moved in with my grandparents because they were elderly and needed, they looked after. And I'll tell you, at eighty-eight, eighty-nine years old, my grandfather still had dreams at night. It never goes away. It will never go away. So this is an honorable effort and I applaud your work on this. I've got a couple of questions, a couple of easy ones, I think. When you spoke with the fire department, did they say that there was a need for a fire hydrant nearby?
Yeah, we would bring a fire hydrant on site.
Good. You only have eight storage units, but you have fourteen units. So just as, just a, there's anything to say about that? I understand there's a space issue.
No, there's two, there's two locations. There's one, if we look at the screen where the cursor is. That one has six. And then there's eight more down.
Yeah, I was going to ask what that was.
So, yeah, those would, those storage units would serve, say, units.
Okay.
One and two, et cetera.
Got it. You know, we don't really like stacked parking and even in spite of what you said about the men who don't have a vehicle. You know, it's just, it seems like there could be a conflict there. So I, that's your only solution, you know, without looking for any others right off, right? It's, it's not the best planning solution.
No, we realize it's not, you know, but again, we're preloaded on.
And so you have like an HOA in case there are disputes or the is that the manager that takes all the soaps and deals?
Since the Western Soul Veterans Coalition owns the entire property and manages all the units as rentals, the manager and or representative of Western Soul Veterans Coalition will be the conflict resolution person. So they will have a lease, just like in typical lease. We've got a set of rules and standards that they must follow. And yes, they could be evicted if they're not following those rules.
Very good. Again, about the parking. Units seven, eight, nine, and ten are furthest away from the parking. And I don't want to redesign it, but it almost seems like if either seven or eight or nine and ten could move over and switch places, maybe with the community building, you might not have a, have a great distance to walk with your groceries or whatever. So I just wanted to point that out.
That, that's a good suggestion, Michael. We'll look at that because it's just the site plan. It's, it's preliminary at this point.
I thought this was now the time to say that.
But it is.
I think that's all I. I think that's all I have. So can Habitat for Humanity do any, uh be a part of this, have a role to play?
We haven't talked to Gail. Um, I certainly can. Their, their model is a little different, but we could certainly talk to them and see if they'd be interested in participating on some level. I know Gail really well.
Uh, you know, there, some of their projects in rifles pretty bad, or packed or built.
Yeah.
Um, I, we don't really like elm trees. The one over there on the left. It goes, we won't care.
We have all elm trees.
Uh, that's all my questions.
So if we're at public comment, I'm going to go ahead and call names and we'll have them come sit in this chair. And if anybody wants, they can, and we'll have everybody speak into this microphone. Great, yeah. And I, I apologize. That spider's like making its way through. It is now tormenting everybody on that side after it fell on Venus. Sorry. I can appreciate that.
Excuse me, Lindsay, uh, this is Mark. Could I uh make one or two quick comments before the public, because I'm afraid they'll get lost?
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Mark, uh, my name's Mark Chain. I'm the Towns Contract Planner and I help out Nicole. John, good to see you again. Uh, a couple of quick things, John. You may know where you may need exceptions or variances, what, you know, whatever we need to be called, but uh please get them to us as soon as you can. And um there should also be a discussion with the Towns Building Official, which is Schum's Code a, a service right now. Uh, because I, I know there are always ways to solve things, but let's bring them in right away, because sometimes uh that can create problems later on. And with that, I'll send it back to Lindsay into the public. I just wanted to say this before. Um, like I said, sometimes I'll have comments at the end after a long public session and everybody leaves and we don't get them out. So thanks for your patience.
Yeah, thanks, Leonard Chain. Uh, I appreciate that this is maybe a little bit more informal in nature, because this isn't like a specific public hearing action item tonight. Um, so thinking that once we kind of roll through all of the three-minute public comments, um, if the applicant wants to, you know, um, address any anything that was brought up, then maybe we have a little bit of further time for discussion afterwards. If everyone's okay with that.
We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so as part of the public, uh, public comments, uh, you'll have three minutes. We typically try to go by that guideline, so if everyone could just kind of keep that in the back of your head, so that I don't have to be using a stopwatch, that would be wonderful. Um, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comments via the list that uh Manager Santino has. Alrighty, first up, we have Trey Pruitt. All right. And do we uh still state name and address for the record? Yes. Okay, wonderful. Thank you for coming in tonight.
So my name is Trey Pruitt. Uh, I own my own two twenty Wood Nine Street, which is the property closest to Nine Street. The, the paved ride is us going in. I start off, I myself am a veteran, a disabled veteran, that.
Thank you for your survey.
Thank you. I have several concerns with this project, if I'm being completely honest. Um, I've been around several vets myself. I'm also thinking of your service, I understand what you guys are trying to do here. But I don't believe this is the right place for it. There's several homes around that that have families, including my own. We have a newborn ourselves. Um, this paved drive they have going near our house is actually on our property, the easement. Um, there's not enough room for vehicles to go in and out at the same time whatsoever. So that's going to cause traffic conflict, but we already have plenty of traffic going in front of my house as it is already. So I'd like to know what's going to be done there to negate the traffic building up right there, as it already does. When you try to pull up in front of our house first thing in the morning, good luck pulling out. Try to get home at the end of the night. Good luck getting in. And public parking as it is, isn't great, and so parking lined up in front of our house all the time. And so looking at the plans for parking, um, you know, this is, this is based off of each person only owning one vehicle, but if families move in, there's going to be at least two vehicles, nine times out of ten, because people own their own vehicles. I don't care if they're married or not. You're gonna, each person's gonna have a vehicle. So, you know, you're looking at twenty-eight vehicles possibly, if families end up moving in there. There's not enough room for that. So overflow parking is going to be in front of my house and across the lot from me as well. We don't want that. Also, property values plummet. Nobody is going to want to move into a house, or if we ever sell our house, nobody's going to want to move into a house that has a homeless center behind it. I don't care if it's for veterans or not. It's a fact. Um. Not to mention all the riffraff that comes in with homeless, and once again, veterans or not. Uh, nine times out of ten, people are homeless because of their own actions over time. Uh, there's this is few and far between where people are homeless because they haven't caught a break. Yes, I do believe that. But most of the time, they're homeless because they haven't made the right choices in life. And so they bring in uh PTSD, especially in veterans, along with other ailments. You think about drugs, you think about alcoholism, everything else that comes along with that, because how many veterans are actually getting the help they need from the VA? So they're not self-medicating, which you got to think about. Um, I mean, I myself can speak, because when I got out, it took me over a year and a half before I finally got help as a disabled veteran. So how many of these older veterans uh that would be coming and are actually getting the help they're supposed to be getting? So that's, that's, those are my main concerns. And also, the easement is not a public access. Not everybody in their dog needs to be using it, and I'm afraid that's what's going to happen as well. So, and if that doesn't end up happening, there needs to be at least a sixty-eight foot privacy fence all the way around. I don't want any of that affecting my kid or anybody else's kids or families that have houses around this proposed subdivision. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mr. Pruitt. Thank you. Next, we have Natalie Hurt.
Hello, thanks for coming in. Um, first and foremost, I'd like to thank every veteran in this room for their service. That's, that's, it's amazing, and we thank you all, and not not just you gentlemen, but Trey as well, and any other veteran in, in the room, kind of thing. Um, I am the deed holder for Trey's property, um, at two twenty North Nine Street. I've owned that property since nineteen ninety-eight. Um, they purchased this in two thousand twenty-one. There seems to be a small discrepancy between my survey of the property when I conveyed this to Trey Madison Pruitt um versus this survey from two thousand and six. So I would like to open up a dialogue between myself and you gentlemen here on this project and, and see if we can get to the bottom of that with the title of insurance companies and, and whatnot. I do, I do have concerns about the parking and, and the amount of, I mean, it is limited amount of parking for, for the kind of project you're, you're discussing kind of thing, and there should be some fencing kind of thing. I am concerned about the alleyway easement that everybody is discussing. It, there is no way that you can fit sidewalks and two lanes of traffic in and out of that space between what the property on both sides actually owns. So, um, it just needs to be something that's um open for discussion. And my name is Natalie Hurt, and I would really like to uh just meet you gentlemen and sit down and, and, and go over all this stuff and, and get with our title companies and see where we can work together. It's an admirable project and we'd like to uh just open up a dialogue.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Alrighty, then we have Lisa Oraz.
You did it.
Yes.
That's a difficult name.
Beautiful. Thanks for coming in tonight. If you want to state your name and address.
Um, Lisa Oraz, and we own property at seven six three North Seventh Street in Silt. All right. My husband and I were stationed at Norton Air Force Base, California for two years, and Susterberg Air Force Base in the Netherlands for three years. During that time, my husband was deployed to Desert Storm, and except for the Coast Guard, we have family in every single nut branch of the military. I am also an active member of the Mount Garfield chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And our reason for telling you this is to let you know that we are aware and empathetic of the needs of the American veteran. But there are many unanswered questions and huge issues with this proposed development. The fact that the alleyway into the development is just that, an alley. I would think that the fire department would have issues with responding to fire or emergency. This would be a safety problem for all the surrounding homes and properties as well. My husband is also a retired fireman for the city of Carbondale. This would not be the only safety issue. You would be placing folks with mental and addiction problems right in the middle of neighborhoods with young children. I know you claim a counselor would be on site, but you cannot promise or prove that that would keep the neighborhood safe. The density is also a problem as well with the, of course, parking and all that issue. Um, and uh I was asking, you know, would they have jobs? Um, all of their uh resources are in Glenwood Springs. So of course, they could catch the bus, but if you look at Silt in general, there's not a lot of job opportunities in Silt. There's not a grocery store. They cannot do their shopping unless they're shopping at the Come and Go or the Gopher or the Dollar Store. So uh another concern mine is how long would they stay there? Um, and then what happens if you've helped all these veterans, then does it turn into a homeless shelter? So I think there are way too many problems with this development at this location, and I hope you consider your current residents' situations.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Thanks for coming in. Alrighty, and then we have Cheryl Strauss.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Missures. Cheryl Strauss, I'm the Executive Director of the Garfield County Housing Authority. Um, I'm just going to give some information on what the county is looking at, the housing authority, to help with this project.
Wonderful.
And as well as the HUD BASH program, which is the housing authority does administer for Garfield County. The BASH program uh is, um, we currently have fifteen vouchers. We can only fill eight of those, because we don't have any place for them to go. So I had eight open vouchers that I filled. We can apply for more at any time. The BASH vouchers actually um do cover a percentage of the um cost of rents, um, which would, of course, we talked about earlier for covering maybe um day-to-day costs, management costs, those kinds of things. The other nice thing about the BASH program is HUD is required through the BASH program that all of those who are um receiving BASH percentage for the rents are required to have some sort of um constant support of some sort. Um, we do have a local person who is part of the BASH uh community out of Grand Junction, who is a local, who takes care of all of that for um our local BASH people who are already on the program. The other thing the county has asked me to do is they have asked me to be lead on helping to secure financing for this project. They have specifically asked me to go to the Federal Mental Leasing Grant, uh, leasing district, to ask for their community grant um in accordance with if the project is approved uh with the help of Silt Town Council. That's something that we're working on diligently. My board as well has given me the okay to go ahead and do that and actually be um the fiscal manager for that particular grant. We would also be writing that grant for the coalition and presenting it to the Federal Mental Leasing District. Now, the town, of course, is familiar with some of their grants that we do. This would actually be a community grant, which is usually has at least one, usually has at least two or more. Um, either municipalities, three, uh, five oh one three Cs, uh, community, um, Catholic charities would be involved as well. Um, and so our, our part in all of this is helping to get financing and helping to get the veterans' homes. We are looking at going to HUD and requesting um support for all of the units, depending on whichever units, how many ever units there are uh in the final site plan. At this point, we're still in the, of course, in the um planning stage. If it is approved, we would actually go to the fall round, the August round for the Federal Mental Leasing District to ask for that community grant. Um, I do believe that we would probably ask for the max. Um, I don't know that we would get it, but we would ask for it, and that would be a male, and that would be aged enough to even for start of starting. Um, I don't know that there is much more that I can add at this point. Um, I certainly cannot address things like, you know, the easements and the fences and all of that stuff. But the housing authority is very, very um committed to this particular project in Silt or wherever it may end up being. We're very committed to it and doing whatever we need to do with helping getting the financing and supporting the coalition in any way that we can. Um, I have brought my BASH coordinator this evening. Um, I don't know that if she wants to address anything. Cindy, did you want to address anything? Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah. I didn't find it, I didn't find it.
She, um, she is actually the person who knows the most about the BASH program through HUD and what we could, could do with that. And and I'm the one who knows more about the whole grant side and what we can do with the Federal Mental Leasing District, so I don't know that she.
Can I ask a question before you?
You bet.
You've heard the concerns from several of the previous speakers about support for the veterans, whether it be medical, mental, physical, uh, can you lend any uh thing to that discussion as far as is, is there, are there enough support people to help a group?
Actually, I'm gonna let Cindy handle that question, because she actually works with our VA coordinator on a, on a daily basis here in the valley, so Cindy, you want to go ahead and do that?
Yeah, Cindy, if you want to speak into the microphone.
Yeah. Um, so yes, I'm Cindy Falltraff, um, Housing Specialist at Garfield County Housing Authority. Um, Manager of the BASH Program, currently have eight housed veterans with that program. Um, HUD requires with the BASH program that each individual participant have supportive mental health services from the VA. So that's a requirement for them to remain on this program. Unless at some point they are able to transition out of that. So that is a requirement. If we do um the project base, which is like what we have for Silt Senior Housing, um, that assistance, that um support would come with the voucher. Um, we would not be able to put a limit on how long the person could live there. Um, we do not ever allow sex offender on any of our programs. Um, but the whole purpose of, of this is to get the homeless veteran off the street. They're no, they're no longer homeless once they're housed. I've heard reference to that. Um, so we want to get them housed and we want to help them with the PTSD, the addiction. That's the whole purpose of the BASH program, is to house them and help them with whatever they need. So um I hope that that helped answer some questions. They generally pay thirty percent of their monthly adjusted income towards the rent, so it's not free. They have to pay something if they have income. Um, they are not required to work. Uh, most of our veterans that we have on our program currently um either have social security or some kind of veteran subsidy, so they're never required to work if they want to. That's okay. A lot of them are elderly or they're disabled. They're not capable of working. So hopefully that kind of clarified that a little bit.
And you said that there was some support. Is that support in Glenwood, or did I hear that it's in Grand Junction? Does veterans have to go to them?
They come, they come to the veteran and the VA determines how much support they need. Do I need to talk to you weekly? Do I need to come to your home weekly? Do I need to come monthly? I mean, there's different levels. I mean, there's different levels. And the, the mental health caseworker determines what that need, you know, what the need is. And, you know, at any point, if the, the participant decides they don't want to do that, then they would probably be taken off the program. Or they could transition out and maybe be given just a regular voucher to go search for housing. I think that was a question as well. What happens to them after this? They transition out of this, they can be given a voucher and go search for, for housing elsewhere.
I have a question too. As far as additional care, so specialized medical, things like that. I mean, we have a very tiny medical facility here that most likely is not equipped to handle a lot of what these folks are, you know, are experiencing. So what happens there? Do you arrange rides for them?
I don't, but often the VA in Glenwood would arrange those types of things.
Okay.
Because without the support of our local VAMC, which is out of Grand Junction, we don't even have this program.
Sure.
They agreed, they're like, we really need this, will you support us? And they said, yes. Most often, the clients that I have, they are not persons that actually have a lot of medical needs. It's more the, the mental health aspect.
Okay.
The addiction aspect. But yes, there could be arrangements could be made to transport. We don't do that in the housing authority though.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alrighty, next we have Inhere.
My name is Indira Chavarian. I live on 1022 Donald B Court, which is just across the street where they're gonna be building this facility. And it got to my concern, most of the things that we are backing up in here. But my concern also, because I am certified peer support and I work with this community all the time. And I think that everybody starts to live with dignity. And I think that three of the dementia, of dementias of recovery includes home, health, and community. And this is serving towards the recovery of anyone that has been struggling, struggling with mental health. Societal ideation comes because the mental health is not addressed properly. And that is one thing that is worrying, as I heard. So I am a neighbor and I am concerned about the noise and the building of this whole project. But I also, I am a human being. And I, being a human being, I support this project because it's needed. And I see it up and down the valley. It is not only for them. This community is up and down the valley and we need these projects so that we can have a better community in the future.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. And then next we have Eli.
Hello, thanks for coming.
Hello, my name's Eli Evans. I live at 943 Grand Avenue, which would be right above the, where it says Rosette Edition on the top, I think even by retaining the wall is, is included. Bear with me, some of the notes I want to skip over that I made just to, to avoid redundancy and what Spence said on this. But points I wanted to start off with first is access. They show this easement and alley coming through and a potential tie-in on the other side of it. I've owned my home for sixteen years and this is the first I've heard that there's an alley or that there's public access through there. I've always been told this is a dead lot, looked into it even several times. And that's always been the issue is that there is no access to this lot. Add into that fact of it that it's not only a debated access, but you're literally putting this right out into the middle of a street between a roundabout and a stop sign. Everybody lives here, everybody knows how fast that traffic moves in and out of that roundabout. As Trey highlighted already, adding traffic in and that's already with the gas station coming in out of that roundabout is already a, a safety issue. People coming out of the parking lot immediately, with people coming out of that, that roundabout. Second, it's a dead-end loop. They say it's a potential tie-in to the, to the east side there, but that's a potential. That's a concern. A lot of these when I hear potential, possibly best tried, that means it's not certain, that means it's, it's not gonna happen. And I'd rather rest on that side of it. Next, talking about the location, and this has come up as well. Silt is not a good location for this. There's no grocery store. Dollar General doesn't have a grocery store. I'm, I'm sure none of you realize, so we have Dollar General for your groceries. Coming back to that, we have no hospital. There's very little clinic services to this. We're a veteran community. Most of our resources come from the adjacent towns. And on that, it's been brought up before, is even as a chance to move ahead, there's, there's little to no employment. So I understand you're saying a number of older, older people that won't require employment. But that's, again, that's the initial and we need to think about this in the long term. Five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now, what is this place going to be? With the residents, I, I am concerned about the crime side of it. I know you said that as soon as you give them a home, they're no longer homeless. But that doesn't change things like that, just because they get into a home. Stats are easy to find all over the place. The CDC, government, CVT, Colorado Public Health Department, environmental. I mean, they've talked about the mental sides of it, even the substance abuse issues. But it's, it's also stated in and out, homeless populations, they have a seventy-five percent higher chance of inflicting or suffering from a criminal attack. You're gonna plug that right into the middle of a residential neighborhood. I said the safety side of it, I, I fear that most of the issues are gonna fall on the Silt Police Force to try to deal with, and most of them are gonna be mental issues that they're not equipped to deal with. Again, we don't have a clinic, we don't have a hospital. It's gonna be our police officers trying to, to wrangle this. The community building and manager, again, I heard could be a social worker or might be, you know, a counselor. That's, that's not a definite. And it's, it's our neighborhood. I think we deserve that. Lastly, on the future of this, again, what, what does this place look like ten years from now? What happens if the funding fails? A lot of the funding that I've heard tonight is, is possibly interested parties. Again, no, no definite. What keeps this from getting a year into it and funding drying up? Then what? Funding dies out, then what? Then we're stuck with this development left behind. I'll, I'll wrap it up at that. It's, it's, it's not about the virtues of providing this, this shelter. I, I, I think that's a noble deed and I commend you guys for it. I don't think this is the right spot for it. I think rifle, I think Glenwood, I understand land is expensive. There's a reason that lot's been cheap. There's a reason numerous people have looked at that lot and never been able to do anything with it. It's not the right law for this. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Alrighty, now we have Laura.
Welcome, thanks for coming.
Thank you. We own the lot next to the Simpler on the main street, 942. And thank you for your service, guys. But we don't know, you know, about the project and we don't understand really well. The pros, pros and the cons, so we're gonna wait and not comment. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, thanks for your comments.
And next we have Renee.
Hi, thanks for coming in.
I'm Renee Rose, I live on 941 Grand Avenue since 2008. I don't have much to say, but first of all, I wanna thank the conservative country. But I've been hearing all this and I think this is not the right place for them. The beds near, like a store hospital closer for anything like starvation. I think this is not a great place for them. Near a, a big space for them. So they can have a place for them. But these, I think, is too tight. And I said to kids, oh, that's, that's all I said. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
That concludes, that concludes all of our public notices in the room and online.
Okay.
Or public comments in the room. Wonderful. Did anyone else have a public comment that they wanted to make that wasn't on the closed list?
Can I just make one quick comment?
If you come up here to the mic, please.
Yeah. Alright, can you go to the south side of that property? So my son owns the lower lot all the way to the, that.
Almost to the townhomes.
Yeah, to from the townhomes to Ninth Street is where my son, that is all my sons right there. So I just wanted to, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
My future grandchildren will be living there, so get after it. So that's what I'm trying to say.
So I think now that we've heard some of the public comments, definitely just wanted to spend,
It's my only.
You know, maybe ten, fifteen minutes, don't need this to go on all night. This is purely an informational session, right? And I think because this is your first time in front of us, as you stated, you don't have all the answers yet either. And so I think, I know that some of the, the things that are brought up, you know, we're not gonna have answers to tonight, but can hopefully lead you in a direction kind of with the community feedback. So would love any kind of initial thoughts or considerations based on kind of what we just heard from our community.
Well, first I want to thank everybody, especially the neighbors for your input. It, it's very important to us to get that feedback now. We hear you, we're definitely aware of your concerns. We've had preliminary conversations about all of these issues. So we, we understand that's, that's the, the cons to this project. But even as Cindy alluded to, the VASH program does a lot of screening and provides mental health care. You know, we intend, and again, we're working through these policies. We're very early on, John said, and I haven't with him, we've got some draft versions of these. Obviously, we'll be refining those for the final submitment, but we plan on doing as thorough a background check as we can. We're not gonna catch everybody, you're still gonna have probably some, you know, minor issues. Our, our hope is that the onsite manager can handle, you know, the majority of those. Of course, we're not gonna get them all, of course, well, unfortunately they have to be called. But there's no way to do this without, with a hundred percent performance. That will take every action we can to try to minimize it. But, but yeah, I mean, we, we could have some potential issues, but we will address them the best we can. We're gonna vet them, we're gonna, one of the other things, we've got our power to do it. But again, it was a side of the bigger picture and no matter where we look, it, it's never the right place. The problem is, is nobody has defined in any town or any part of the county where the right place is. It, it, I don't know if that exists. We have to be residential, so of course we're gonna be in neighborhoods. Would we be somewhere else that didn't have houses around them? Of course. But again, we're hoping these people assimilate back into these communities and they are good neighbors. But, and as I said, we do understand the concerns. As far as the access, we do have a DED access easement. That is this, an alley that doesn't line up with the alley across Ninth Street. And that is our legal access to the lot. Mark shows it on this drawing here as eighteen foot of paved surface and twenty foot access easement, access utilities. And that, that is sufficient for residency vehicles. We've had a, a Oren Moon, you know, the, the River Fire Marshal review this, give us the feedback. And he asked us to extend this. And I want to clarify this, I heard one of the neighbors saying that we're going to connect to the east. Our intent is not to ever connect to the east. He asked us to extend this alley to the east as far as we can because they want to be able to have access down the back of these units if, if they need to. We have no intentions of connecting it unless the town says, we want you to connect that road all the way through. But they have not indicated that at this stage. And again, we're very early on. Like, we, we have worked with fire marshals for the, for emergency access. We've done the battle search, we do have legal access easement there. And we would obviously work with the neighbors if this moves forward to, you know, refine that design, you know, help with fencing sidewalks, you know, minimize the, the impact as much as possible. I think that's it.
I would just like to say thank you for the, the input from the neighbors as well. And thank you to the town of Silt for hearing us out. The only, the only thing that I would like to reassure everybody is that as far as the drug and alcohol abuse, we would, and I'm not sure what the rules and regs are for HUD and all the rest of the, you know, the governmental parameters are. But we would, you know, what we thought would be a, a monthly drug testing for the, for the residents. Not sure if that's legal, not sure if, you know, if we can do that. But that is something that we would, you know, that we thought would be a part of the deal in order to get in, you know, and stay in. So again, I don't know if that's legal or not. But we're, we're gonna do everything we can to be, you know, a good neighbor. We, we don't want any problems. You can come in and look at our facility in Glenwood. The county gave us five thousand square feet, we remodeled it during COVID. It's, it's, we have computers, flight simulator, pool table, library, exercise area. So, I mean, you're welcome to come in and check it out and see how we run things.
Appreciate that advice.
I got one thing to say too. It was mentioned that a lot of these people are homeless because of bad choices. There's always gonna be some of that. But when we're talking about veterans, you have to take into consideration what these men and women have been through. Obviously, our disabled veteran sitting back here knows what I'm talking about. Some of these people come home and they're totally lost. And this is something by getting them off the street is the first step. The Resource Center that we have in Glenwood is there to help them with medical, occupational, physical, things like that. But the first thing we have to do is get them off the streets. And like John has said, you know, we're gonna do everything in our power to make sure that these people are vetted properly and that they're going to be good neighbors. Because obviously we don't want any issues either. I mean, I have, I have five grandchildren and, you know, I would, I would be honest to say that I wouldn't be concerned if this was gonna be next, you know, split by my house. But at the same time, I want to think about what these people have been through, what they have sacrificed for our country. And I think that this is, this is the first step to getting them the help that they need.
I just pulled up real quick, this, this is a, a working document, which are occupancy rules. I don't think we need to go through it all, but you can see that we're trying to address the typical, you know, tenant landlord issues. And that includes visitors, alcoholic beverages, common areas, you know, patios, parking, magnets. So, so we're trying to address that now and then. And if this moves forward, we'll, we'll have, you know, better information for you guys. And we'll take this information from the public and incorporate that into this document.
Great, thank you. Eli, the public comment is closed, but if you do have just one more comment, if you could just speak into the microphone just so that we can get it on record. And then after this, then we'll wrap it up.
And I'm sorry, it's, it's a question, not a comment. But so you guys referred back to this alley again. And if it's an alley, how is that acceptable for accessing to a development? My question would be, an alley is just that, it's an alley. It's not a street saying that I would have access to go up and down that as well, to work on the back of my property. Any of us would have access up and down that, that's an alley, not a street. Please take that into consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate that comment. Obviously, this is one step in a many-step process. And so there is going to be future opportunities for public comment on this particular issue when you come back before us again, when you come back before the Board of Trustees again. Um, before us again, when you come back before, uh, the Board of Trustees again. Uh, so really appreciate you all coming in tonight, um, and sharing this with us. Um, and and. Yeah, giving us some additional knowledge about the project so that when it does come before us at another meeting, we'll kind of be one step further, right? You've already kind of taken. Um, the first step in in getting some community feedback. So do any of my fellow commissioners have any other?
I would really say that if you go home tonight and think of something, write it down, put it in a letter, address it to Nicole, Town of Silk.
How will everybody be notified of your future planning and zoning meetings?
So, yeah, so all of these are public notice, I believe, um, when there is a public notice action item. Uh, excuse me?
I don't think anybody got a notice about today.
So because this wasn't a public hearing, right?
We did.
So, yeah, this, this meeting was public noticed for a different land use application than what was going to be sufficient for what is trying to be done here. So there was public notices that went out to everybody within two hundred feet around the property. And that was vetted out, and we did get green cards back, and we did get confirmation that that was public notice. They will also be going in front of the Board of Trustees in March for the same informational. Um, presentation that they just gave the Planning and Zoning Commission. That will not be public notice because it's just informational, but when they actually make an application. And they're coming in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they'll also be in front of the Board of Trustees with the application that they have to, um. That they have to apply for, that will all be public notice with in two hundred feet surrounding the property. So if you didn't get one, it's very possible that you're not within that two hundred feet. Or it's possible that, um. It never got picked up from the post office, which is a problem with certified mailing. So it is certified. You have to go sign for it.
Great. Thanks for that, Nicole. And then additionally, I know, um, Town of Silk, uh, planning and zoning meetings are the first Tuesday of the month. Uh, Board of Trustees are the first and third Mondays. Uh, usually there is the sign on the roundabout that has it, and then the agendas are posted on townofsilk.org.
Yes.
Uh, typically the Thursday or Friday before that meeting. So you can always check just to see if it was on the upcoming agenda.
Usually it's Friday.
Usually it's Friday.
And if you have any questions, you can definitely reach out to me, and I can give you more information on dates that, um, are upcoming.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we usually don't, uh, see anyone out in the audience at these, so it's just nice to see, um, the community, you know, coming out and. Um, speaking up on something that they're passionate about. So appreciate everyone taking time out of their Tuesday nights to come out and let us know what they think about all of this.
This one's a one last request. Is there a chance we could get kind of individually a nod of generally support or not support our project from each of the the members? Knowing there's a lot of more information to come, but just the concept and the idea where we're at now. And we're just trying to say if we spend the time and effort moving forward, so.
Sure. If any of my fellow commissioners want to make maybe any comments, if not, that's completely fine as well. Um. If anyone has, though, any last comments for these gentlemen that are in front of us tonight?
I do have some comments. So I do thank you for bringing this project. Um, to us, I do think that there is a broken community that needs some help. Um, I do feel like the safety of the Silk community and with your community residence needs to be at the utmost concern. Um, you know, I did have few reservations rolling around in my head, um, as I think, you know, most people do. Um. And I I would maybe reach out to also the traveler, like, I don't know if anybody in this room knows what the traveler is, but it takes the elderly residents to. You know, the grocery store, and that could be an access point for them. So I think that there are resources in our valley, um, to help with with the transportation issues. But, yeah, safety is definitely a concern. Um, I would like to see that addressed. I I think it's a great project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. You're welcome.
I'm generally supportive of the project. Think the site plan might be a little too tight. Think I alluded to that, especially while parking. And I think you're going to have to deal with the alley issues right away issues and perhaps even. Pedestrian issues from your site to the Ninth Street area.
That's all.
I would say I am in support of this project, but not. The way that it presented right now. I think listening to the community. Around how tight the space is, um. And I just worry about the lack of just basic services to live and have a quality of life and. You know, especially with folks that don't have vehicles, um, or are needing some extra support. Um. Yeah, so I just have, I have some, some reservations and would like to see more of a. A plan around. What is the care and what are those wraparound resources and services that are a guarantee with folks? Knowing that they're going to live in a, in an area that doesn't have a lot of those things readily available.
Thanks, Dana.
So I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight to this meeting. It is good to hear all sides of everything. My issue, as long as it is meets the comprehensive plan, that is a guideline for this community. There are a lot of needs from everyone that wants everything. Not everybody can get everything. So to be fair and balanced with this, with the, again, quality of life issues, as well as what the vets needs. Yes, I have many friends that are veterinarians, excuse me. Let's try this again, folks. I do have a lot of friends that are vets. Uh, some have been disabled, some aren't. But I understand the issues that they go through, because I'm, part of my family is military. I understand what happens and what needs a lot to be done. The issues with this project, again, is easements, egress, uh, concerns of neighbors. I think if all of these can be addressed, again, coupled with the comprehensive plan, then I think these would be an ideal situation. So with that, my involvement, again, would be comprehensive plan. That's what we, our guideline is for the Town of Silk in this particular area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners. I I really think it's a. It's a good idea. It's good plans. I I think it's just a little bit shy right now on site development and all that other good stuff, where we can really make a. An educated decision, you know, access and all other good things. I do see some pinch points and some areas that really do concern me, and. You know, once you get that all developed, I'm sure you'll address those in the future, but, uh, right now, overall, you know, I'd. Be supportive of seeing it moving on forward to the next step as. Or as, as evaluating what you're going to present and actually have something that meets the requirements of the town and neighbors, of course.
Thank you. Yeah, just to be clear, this, when the subdivision was created, you know, a hundred years ago, this was the legal access for this lot. Is it unusual? Absolutely. But it is the only access that that's our legal access for this parcel. So that unfortunately, what we have to work with. So we've heard, we've heard everybody's concerns. Um, we're going to go back and and see if there's a way we can make it any better. It's a difficult situation, so we'll, we'll see what we can do for sure. Thank you. Thank you for taking your time. Yeah. Thank you all.
John, you could unshare your screen. All right. Who wants to stick around for the rest of this meeting?
Why don't you give a minute or two for everybody to clear the room, just so we're not talking to each other over people leaving?
I was watching the whole time. I was like. It crawled on my screen and on yours. Me like back. Well, I backed up too, and I was like, oh my god.
Don't worry about the chairs, shelves.
All right, guys, if you're going to continue to chat, maybe, um, take it outside so we can continue. Thank you.
That was close to only twenty minutes, Nicole.
It exceeded our time. I told my husband I was a facilitator for that. Mark, Mark and I have already, um, we do not have a, a ton of planner updates. And especially with the meeting last night, um, we're okay to go on ahead and entertain a motion to wrap the meeting. Thank you.
You don't have any projects that you know for the next meeting?
So upcoming, we'll probably have five eleven North Fifth Street, which is.
Yes. Five eleven North Fifth at the next meeting.
And then we will, uh, potentially have a food truck that has submitted, and then we're still waiting for some information.
Want to bring samples.
That would be great, right?
Yes, please. Can they provide our dinner? We love to sample around here.
Um, but other than that, we don't have anything pressing that's going to be on the next meeting.
Okay.
Yet. There's still time to turn something in.
Still a couple of weeks.
There is.
All right. Was that, that's the planner's report?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We'll move into Commissioner comments then. Uh. Who would like to start? Do a little round robin.
That was interesting. So.
Absolutely. I, um, I actually appreciated that this was an information session tonight, and I don't know how. We could like incorporate this stuff like in the future. Like, part of me was actually thinking, oh, like, this could have just been like a community meeting between the applicant and the residents. Right? And I kind of used the P and Z meeting almost as that. But as I mentioned, like, it almost didn't. It was nice to not have that air of formality that it was a public meeting, that they could still hear that a vision from back. Like, I'm guessing, you know, the same people are going to be here for weeks to take. Much of the whole comment.
Give me a second, but you know, just to, just to break in here. Um, interestingly, I talked in the call today. And I had no idea that there was going to be additional information given or that it had been noticed. And I remember saying. I should probably be down there, but I don't think I need to be. It's only going to be a twenty-minute item. But anyway. Uh, it is very difficult to have public input when there's not an application and there's been a public notice put out there. And somehow we, that that should have been noted better at the meeting, and I can't see everybody in there when Nicole said there were fifteen people there and they were property owners. I thought it was actually meant that. Uh, that Mark guy who owned the property was a, it was a group who owned it. Um, but it's hard to take input because. People aren't sure what they should be commenting on, except seeing a couple of schematics up there. And, uh, this is very difficult for all involved. And if they were going to make an application on this, I assume they would have had. Four out of five of all these concerns addressed somehow, whether through the Housing Authority or going through items. And as a matter of fact, one of the things that I did bring up to Nicole. Was we need to check out the record reception numbers on the, um. Uh, the access and utility easement, because you don't usually have. Multifamily projects that access off an alley unless there's something, uh, unusual about it. But that's something that, uh, will be. Vetted by the applicant and then staff, so I hope it's much easier the next time. Anyways, it's really, it's really difficult when there is not a complete application and you have a staff report. And, um, nobody knows what's coming, and it's, it's not really fair to anybody, you know, the, the property owner, the neighbors or staff, and most of all, whether it's the board or the commission. So I wish I had known a little bit more about this, and I apologize for not being there.
Appreciate that, Mark. I think it went fine. I think, yeah. Eddie, any comments?
Comments? Or motions? I don't really have any comments. I I thought, uh, the meeting yesterday was very informative. I really enjoyed that. Professor's giving it tonight also, very informative, like. It's everybody's input. I mean, that's a tough one, because I mean, you don't have enough information to make a decision or a choice. I mean, there's just too much out there. Yes. Yeah, especially what the town brings with it going, just like what I access that Beth was telling me also.
I would like to make a comment, uh, and then have an issue with veterinarians instead of vets. Coming out of my mouth. So vets and areas of it, see, I go right there. Vets. It's all an issue for me. But anyway, I was like, it's a veterinarian, probably embarrassing.
Evan, light to the whole conversation.
Well, probably I'm just a humorist.
Right?
Yeah, maybe one, that spider, it's on the second microphone.
No, I'm good. Kill it. Like, it was over here.
I am like.
He made his way.
Yeah, he, he started.
That thing looking in the eye.
Should have just.
I, I do have maybe a suggestion, and this is kind of based off of yesterday's strategic plan, and then given. Um, the public comments here is looking into. And maybe this is not a thing for this year, but looking into having some interpretation services or. Just making this more of an accessible atmosphere for folks that are bilingual or would prefer to speak in a, in a different language other than English. To make public comment. Um, I'm not assuming that any of these folks wanted to speak a different language than English, but I think. This kind of was a continuation of yesterday, like, how can we make a lot of this more accessible, given the population that of Silk? And that a lot of folks are probably native Spanish speakers and prefer to speak Spanish. Um, I just think that that would make. Decisions that we are hoping to make or, you know, public comments, having these meetings, just. Be more representative of our community. Um, so this comment is based on yesterday and then today, too. So.
Michael? I have one more thing to say. Move, we adjourn.
Second. I, I did. Okay, I have one thing that I wanted to say, just something that I was thinking about as, as everybody was up here, like, really interesting over the past couple of days, and I know, um, Jennifer and Eddie, you guys had to leave last night. I don't know if you were here for them talking about. Um, if we had any thoughts on the state's request of like entertaining some of the migrant communities that are now in Denver.
Oh, I just hear one.
And and then, yeah, okay, so you, so you were here for that. And so interesting, like, the, this is at our doorstep now, right? So it's like the, the migrant crisis that's happening in Denver, and to a certain extent, Carbondale, and then, um, the Veterans Coalition in here tonight. And so as this has come up now twice, you know, in terms of the resources that we do have, or like the amenities. That we do have to point people towards, um. You know, it, it, I kind of almost wanted to make a statement tonight to the audience that kind of talked about, yeah, we have, we have been asked if we, you know, could accommodate this. And so. There was going to have to be some compromises made when you, would you rather host a migrant community, or would you rather work towards housing, you know, unhoused vets right now? And there's going to have to be some like give and take now that this is really at our doorstep. So I just wanted to kind of draw those parallels between tonight and today. And with that, I'll, I'll say that the adjournment.
If I could say something about the, uh, you know, the Carbondale. Uh, migrant issue, just so you know, when Carbondale sent out requests for funding from a couple of different counties and the towns all the way down to Parachute. I don't think they got one dollar. The only thing they got was, uh, McIreland saying, hey, um, you ought to go to Garfield County. But anyway, it's, it's, it's really tough up there. It's been a lot of money. There's been, there's twenty people living in Town Hall now. It's just, it's just difficult and it's odd.
Wow.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, Silk's got some choices that we need to make in terms of.
And just bigger conversation, like what are our emergency plans for things like these? Like what? What is our unified message or how, how are we going to be human towards humans while also still running a town?
The teamwork was on.